I call the order of the Westlake City Schools Regular Board Meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021. Roll call.
Kraft.
Here.
Finuchin.
Here.
Luszinski.
Here.
Here now.
Here.
Doctor Stole is unable to attend as he's on a business. Okay.
Everyone who would join me and stand to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank all of those that are with us today and all of those that are with us remotely. The last several weeks have provided the opportunity to walk through schools and see our students and staff and volunteers involved in solemn study and scientific exploration. All are working fiercely as we approach our holiday break. Possibly more than ever, this is a break you have all very much earned and very much deserved. And we hope you take the time to enjoy it. It's not so only because of the long hours courageous perseverance and achievement of so much success, but because along the way you have had to endure so much more. Even in the last week and last few days, we have all lost too many of our Westlake family to sickness and even passing. This should be a time for joy and rejoicing. So as you take leave, we wish you and your family happy holidays and a happy new year. Enjoy your time and enjoy your family. And thank you for all you do for our students and for Westlake City Schools. Is there a move to approve the agenda?
A move?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trenna?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Luszinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And at this time I'll call Dr. Goggins for presentation.
Great, thank you. And also I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to participate virtually today. I was not able to be there in session. I do want to share a presentation. One of the topics that we talk about quite a bit is masking throughout the district. I do want to cover some information in regard to that. Some of this was also from the previous presentation, but I felt it was relevant to share some of it again. And I won't go through it as quickly or have the bullets show up differently. Just to remind folks, we, since the beginning, we've been following the lead of the Ohio Department of Health and following their quarantine guidelines. So as I had mentioned in the last meeting, when the distance that we needed to keep were six feet between each student in order to keep students out of quarantine or exclusion, we were in a hybrid schedule. When it reduced down to three feet and masked, it led to the all in. And then even as we started this school year, the quarantine exclusion guidelines started off with both students masked and then adjusted, it adjusted to adding the three feet inside there. Just going through our timeline, August 16th, we made a decision for a five-week mask requirement. And we maintained it in every building, actually, most of our buildings still with that five week was extended multiple times. And we did release the mask requirements at the high school on December 1st. We did, at the time, September 14th, have a meeting with the Children's Hospital, not just us, but other superintendents as well, requesting for a four-week extension, which we did and actually went another five weeks looking at October 29th. And then a big thing for us was the Ohio Department of Health coming out with the mask to stay and test to play program, as well as the FDA approving the emergency use of vaccines for ages five through 11. Everything we have been doing, we've been also making sure we are maximizing the spacing, running through our enhanced cleaning and contact tracing. And I have to keep putting this on because our nurses do a tremendous job in contact tracing and it gives us a lot of good information, not only to be able to participate in the mask to stay program, but also to monitor, to see how our protocols are working. And the mask to stay is, has been the recommendation from the Ohio Department of Health that did come out. And it's not just based on what's happening in the Westlake schools, but also what is happening in Warren County and some data that they've seen across the country. So just what is the mask to stay program? Just briefly, mask to stay is for really students that have in-district exposure, where if a student is considered to be a close contact inside of school, then they can continue to, and they're not showing symptoms, I should put that in. They, they wear a mask for the 14 days and then they can do the rapid tests to get out of that as well. What remains the same is the exclusion protocol for close contacts outside of school. So if a student is exposed outside of school, then they're still going through the 10-day quarantine or exclusion and can reduce it if they take a test after five days. This was relevant to us and this is updated data from the week's close last Thursday. We run from every Friday to Thursday. And that helps us post it quicker on a Friday. You could see that when we trace in-district and out-of-district transmission, I think that's, I don't know if that's 118 to 11, to where the majority of the cases that we're seeing are happening outside of the district, which is still the trend that we're seeing right now. This was the question or the conversation that we had during our last board meeting was, all I asked is that the board look at phase one. I know I had phases two and three, but we wanted to revisit phases two and three to kind of see what type of spread we're either seeing in district or also community cases as well. And we did, on December 1st, we waited five days after Thanksgiving and participated in the mask to stay and test to play program at the high school. We're seeing similar to what we saw previously. We did have four cases that we categorized as in-district. Now, what I want to point out is in-district spread goes across all areas of school. It's not just in the classroom, but it's also lunchrooms, buses, and extracurriculars. The majority of cases that we saw, I think we had three cases in an extracurricular with our hockey team, and then one case in lunch. Both were not masked activities. So it really wasn't an impact in regard to saying that masking had anything to do with that. So we are still seeing consistent data there. What I presented, this is where I have a bit of a change and I did send out a communication to families last week about this. And I originally proposed that we move to phase two on January 5th. It does give nine weeks of a window for vaccination. We do have a high percentage of vaccinated students already at Lee Bernison. And it's, it gives like five days after New Year's Eve to let some cases present themselves. And so that was originally what we said is start, do phase two on January 5th. Then with phase three being targeted for January 24th as well. Looking at, just going back and looking at our Dover campus, we're still at zeros when it comes to in-district spread. We are seeing more cases that are again being generated outside of the school, but those are just really good numbers there. What I'm proposing that we look at now is, we had, so we watched the information that came out after our Thanksgiving break and that was probably a five to six day holiday. I think it was the high school that had a five day and the rest of the buildings had a six-day weekend with one holiday event during that time. And coming back into school, we saw 42 cases coming in, which was pretty significant. And so we started talking about it internally and drawing more and more concern for the winter holiday. You have at least two holidays being celebrated. We're anticipating a lot more travel. You tend to travel more when you have 14 days as opposed to five or six days. So by going back and looking at the, the data that actually fueled the mask to stay and test to play, we became concerned with coming out of a holiday that is, that along with multiple holidays and all the travel and with community spread being where it is, and felt better if we were to combine phases two and three and just have a new phase two where the Dover campus and the elementary campus aligned with each other. So that, that's something that I'm looking at for, for this. I do have some discussion points. I'm not going to ask the board for a vote on anything tonight. What I would like to do is have a plan in place where we communicate with families that, you know, we do have the week of the 24th targeted for a mask rollback on the Dover and elementary campuses. That also gives us time to monitor community and in-district spread. And then we can discuss the next step at the January 24th board meeting. The reason I'm doing that is not necessarily to kick the can down the road to the January meeting, but that's six weeks away. And, and one of the things that I would be uncomfortable with is asking the board for a vote where in COVID years, six weeks is a long time where you can have a lot of variables change within that time. So I'd be more comfortable targeting the 24th to have this conversation now. We'd have to think about how we send out that information to families. Is it something where we would say that, you know, the 25th, you know, we would make a decision on the 24th and the very next day it would be done or we'd wait till the following Monday and we can have that conversation with that as well. I'd also like to send a communication to families, really emphasizing the importance of masking, you know, at the high school, going into our winter break with where we are now. We really don't have many days until the, the start of the winter break. So I think coordinating that and organizing anything to happen before the break would not be generally feasible. And then the last discussion point, and then I'd open it up to the board to discuss as well, is when we return back from that holiday break, because there really is a concern coming back from that. And, and when we come back at the high school, or actually the whole district during that week, it's a three-day week. And, and that, and if we require masks for those three days, that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that gives almost a full 10 days from the New Year's Eve holiday to have any cases present themselves and put us in a good position to be able to go back to our strongly recommended policy at the high school. I would be concerned that we come out of a break like that and then have some things happen and then have to pull back that policy and, and we don't want to do, we don't want to have it going on and off. We'd have, like it to be more planned. So those are my thoughts for this evening and I can pause and take some comments from the board.
Dr. Goggins, I'm comfortable with your discussion points, but let me turn it over to the rest of the board. Any thoughts, comments, questions for Dr. Goggins?
Um, I just have one comment to add on to what Mr. Craft just said. I like the idea of what you're proposing for the high school coming back from break. There's so many unknowns. You know, kids travel, some kids travel out of the country during that time as well. So having that, you know, maybe for that first week would give us plenty of time to be able to see, you know, if there's any kind of, you know, contagion or not. So I like that idea.
Other thoughts, questions, comments?
I like the idea of returning to, with masks for that first couple of days for the high school and then discussing them further on the 24th. I'm good with this plan.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a hearing of the public. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? We've all had an opportunity to, oh, if you would.
Be on an agenda item.
What's that?
Has to be on an agenda.
Right. Uh huh. We are taking anything that the public has to discuss with us at this time. Anything that is an agenda item? And if you would state your name and your address?
My name's Elaine Evenhouse and I'm not going to give my address.
Oh, why is that?
Well, why would I target myself?
Are you a Westlake resident?
Yeah.
And I don't understand your comment, but go ahead and address the board.
Um, I'm just asking if any of you have ever done any of your own research on whether masks work?
Again, this is not an opportunity for the board to engage you, but certainly an opportunity for you to engage the board.
Okay. Well, I am engaging and I'm asking that question because if you've done your research and I, and I know by looking at all of you, none of you have, because you're all wearing masks still. Um, I, I actually wrote a big thing up about this because the whole idea of vaccines came from homeopathy. Homeopathy is like, yours like low dose minimum. Um, it is the, is the idea valid? It is. It actually works. But not the process that the vaccines use. So natural immunity is, is a real thing. And, um, the way homeopathy works is that you're exposed to minute dosages of the, of the affected tissues. There's even a homeopathic nosode for COVID. But, um, the way it works is, and it's been proven through ancient Chinese history, that they give a little bit of whatever sickness that a person has, just a low dose, just a tiny, tiny touch of it. And that person becomes immune to it. So that's how natural immunity works. Your body is exposed to a little bit every day. Okay. So by masking up, by having obsessive cleanliness and sterilizing everything, you're actually reducing the amount that your immune system is engaging in the viruses and bacteria needed for your immune system to work properly. Every single day, your body is exposed to millions of viruses, bacteria, fungi. And that's what builds your immune system. Do you know why everybody's getting sick right now? It's because of these practices that you're doing. You're lowering their immune system. You're lowering your immune system. Not getting enough oxygen, that lowers your immune system. The stress that you're causing all of these children, especially the pre-K and elementary. I mean, how dare you guys do this to these children? I mean, shame on every one of you for selling out our children because they got, you guys got paid. The school district got paid to make these mandates in effect. You're not doing anything whatsoever on real science. No real science whatsoever. So do your own homework.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
You will never change your minds. God forbid there's logic involved.
We've had an opportunity to review the minutes from November the 3rd as well as November the 22nd. All those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye. Aye. Those that do not, say no. Minutes are approved. I'm going to move on to informative reports and recognitions. Dr. Goggins, anything you want to add at this time?
You know, I can reserve the rest of my report for my agenda items.
That sounds good. Treasure Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Um, tonight I'll just briefly touch on, we're still in the process of our annual audit. Our finance committee meeting, all right, I'm sorry, finance committee has been very good in the past about doing a post audit. I did reach out to the Auditor of State's office, our lead auditor on it. Right now they're targeting the week of the 27th as the audit, finalizing the audit. We do have a statutory requirement to have it filed by the 31st. So we are running right up against that deadline. Once I have more information, I will pass that on to, we start with finance committee meeting, but it is open to all board members. It's not a meeting of the Board of Education. It's a meeting of the State of Ohio Auditor's Office. And therefore is not a formal public meeting of the board. So it is all still open to the five board members though, to all attend if they so choose.
And you're, you're going to host that in the Treasurer's office?
Once I have more details, I will let you know. It will be up to the Auditor's Office. This year they have done nearly, I would say 99% virtual with us as we've just been doing everything, scanning it, emailing it. They've only been on-site one day. So they may choose to do it as a virtual meeting and I will let you know as soon as I have details on that.
Thank you.
Other than the post audit itself, the audit itself, I'm being told is going along well. There have been no issues that have been brought to my attention up to this point. All of our financials have been filed and the CAFER, our comprehensive annual financial report is being prepared. As we finalize the CAFER, they do review the, a little bit of the CAFER, but most all of it is the financial that have already been previously reported. So that is going along. Other than that, I just, before I get into my recommendations, I just want to wish everyone here and then the community a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and really a joyous holiday season of all the holidays that we have.
Thank you.
I can move into my recommendations if that's okay. Tonight I have a few recommendations. First one is approving permanent appropriations. As you're aware, any changes in appropriations, we do bring to the Board of Education at the next available meeting for approval. You'll see that this one I think is a move of overall increase of appropriations of, I want to say $135 if I remember it correctly. It's just shifting some money around for the most part. Under our internal controls, we allow our building principals or our budget managers, both central offices in the buildings, to move money in between appropriation accounts with approval of the superintendent. And then it comes to the Board of Education. That's why you see those moves happen as they need money in different line items than originally, originally planned. I do have a transfer on as B, for B, which is for our annual pool fee with the city. It's a $10,000 annual fee that we have. Currently we're, we're under lease. I believe the lease ends in October of '22 is the last payment. So we'll have another year of payments that we're looking at with it. I do have a then and now, or a couple then and nows listed there. If you have questions, let me know. And then the last one that I have on here is for D. This is a payment and move tax agreement with Barrington Police Apartments. You'll see it listed out there in the resolution. But what happens is in a lot of cases where we have situations where property is, we feel undervalued. And this can happen in two ways. One, a property owner may bring a complaint to the tax board of, board of revision. They, and any property owner can do this. The second way is we can bring complaints when we're, when we feel a property is undervalued. And in this case, this is a sale of the property that happened, I want to say in 2019. And the property sold for significantly more than what it's been valued at with the county. We go ahead and we lodged a complaint instead of working through that whole process, which can be a very long process, tedious process, time-consuming and expensive. It was proposed that we enter into a settlement agreement, a payment and move of tax where they make the district whole for the portion of taxes that we would have received during the tax years that are listed out in the resolution. So if you have more questions on that, please let me know. We have been, we have done agreements like this in the past with other property owners. It is to the benefit of the district as we're able to be, be made whole for what would have been paid to the district without incurring additional legal costs through the process.
How long will the pilot go for?
So the pilot is listed in here that it sets the values for 1920 and I believe 21. It goes through 23, tax year 23, and it's based on agreed upon values. Because the county has the right and they very well may review this and change the property value, which would then either lower this agreement, okay, or make this agreement null and void.
What would?
For those future years.
What would make it null and void?
If they value the property higher than its value in our agreement. There would be, there's no point of having the agreement at that junction. I have no opposition to combining all four, if it so pleases the board into one vote.
Is there a motion to approve Treasurer's recommendations for A, B, C, and D?
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? Um, what is your, what are your thoughts as we move forward with the pool agreement with the city? I know that you have relationships with the city. We have relationships with the city, but just moving forward in a unified fashion to talk about what's next for the pool?
Well, this will be something that will work with, honestly, probably with our new athletic director. We're currently with an interim athletic director. As they get started, this will be one of the things that they'll be tasked with. I know the history of, or my, I take that back. My understanding of the history with the pool lease is that it was specifically for the diving well that was put in at the rec center. When we actually read the lease agreement, okay, it doesn't necessarily speak to the diving well. It speaks to the use.
More of a broad use, right?
Broad use by our swim teams for both events as well as practices. If that is the case, as it is read, I would assume that the city will seek some sort of compensation going forward to continue that access for our athletes. And that's something that we can work through. We, we would obviously look to lower it as they don't have those capital expenditures anymore that they incurred 20 years ago or so. But it is something that will work with the city through the rec department initially and our athletic director to start with.
Possibly something we could add to the agenda and the 27th?
Of.
To, I know that we're going to potentially have a meeting at Treasurer's office.
No, that would be an auditor, a meeting of the Auditor of State. That's not a board or a board committee.
Guys, we're not.
We could look to schedule a finance committee meeting if you'd like.
And sometime.
That date or another day.
Yeah, right. There's sometime in January.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Super. Further discussion?
Yeah, just on that same topic. Do you have any experience as to what other communities have done? It's not every school is fortunate enough to have their own pool, but a lot of times they do, they do coordinate with the city.
You know, it's something that I can do a little research on. There's a number of districts that are similar to our size that do have pools in the community. So I can check to see how that's structured.
Yeah.
I know from both experience here and in my previous district, you know, it's very commonplace for hockey teams to pay for, you know, ice time.
And we do.
And we do, you know, our hockey parents actually do here.
Yes.
In my former district where the city owned the hockey rink, it was still something that, you know, the, the district would pay for ice time and use of the facility. So it's not uncommon or unheard of to pay for use of the city-owned facilities. But I can look more into the notoriety specifically.
Well, you know, since you, you brought up the hockey team, actually a parent was talking to me not long ago and wondering why the hockey parents paid for the ice time versus the district. And they gave a variety of different examples, you know, all the other different sports and activities and things like that. It used to be a club and then it turned into a varsity sport a number of years ago. And I, when it was a club, I understood that. Because again, it's a club, typically it's financed by the students' parents and whomever wants to be actively involved. But once it becomes a varsity sport, I don't want to say I assumed it, but I guess I never, I never gave it any thought until someone brought it to my attention that the parents are still paying for the ice time, as far as I know.
My understanding is yes, they are, they help offset that cost or pay the majority of that cost.
Right.
My understanding in conversations prior to Mr. Sibley leaving has been there's a number of sports that we had moved from club to varsity and they're still in their relative infancy as varsity sports. And so the district as a whole has may not, has not made that long-term commitment. Dr. Goggins, is there something different that you would want to add to that?
No, I think it's a sustainability component as well. One of the things that we try and do is offer as many sports as we possibly can. We've added bowling, we've added, you know, girls lacrosse, we've added hockey. We've, we, we try and, we have, we have almost more, more sports than we do students to fill the teams at times. And it, it does become a sustainability issue where, you know, it may limit us from being able to continue to offer sports. We may look at it and say, well, if it's not financial, financially feasible for us to do this for a small number of students, then we stop doing it. So we're, we are watching that, we are monitoring it, but we do have sports that are very cost-dependent that are in the infancy and we will continue to watch that. But we have not made that financial commitment to fully fund some of those sports yet because. But we have not made that financial commitment to fully fund some of those sports yet because, you know, some days, some years, they have a good number, and then the next year, they barely have enough to, to compete. So we're still watching that.
I know it relates to hockey. That was one of the discussion points. That was very concerning. Moving from a club to a varsity sport, primarily because they wanted to make sure that there was a feeder. You know, are they going to be able to sustain, you know, players? Are there people coming up through the ranks, so to speak? And I can see that in certain sports where those kind of ebb and flow. But I think it's, it's, it's been a little bit of a while. So I guess my, my question is, what's your definition of infancy?
My cursor froze, and I, and I don't have, I don't have an exact definition of that where, you know, it's a certain amount of time. You know, I, yeah, I don't, I don't have an exact timeline for that.
Yeah. Well, I know that I know the boosters help offset certain things. I think they pay for the tournaments for the bowling folks. But I guess, you know, without continuing to belabor it, it would be good to have a discussion some point in the near future.
I agree.
To, to see if there was some sort of way to, with the boosters, with the district, with the parents, maybe shift around some of that financial burden. And obviously, the district only has so many funds and can only field so many teams. You know, and we don't want to, I know we don't want to remove a varsity sport and put it back to a club or just get rid of it. And then three years later, oh, we have enough players. We're going to bring it back again.
I will say, you know, we are fortunate right now to have an interim AD, Mr. McGuire. And Mr. McGuire, we had an excellent first Athletic Council meeting with him a couple of weeks ago. I met with him and Mr. Mavor, who is also a former AD regarding an athletic budget. And one of the things that I think would be a good step with this and that Mr. McGuire is working on is formalizing an athletic budget for the athletic department. Historically, we have operated off of revenues coming in. And while the district will support things like the pool lease here and as well as supplementals and transportation costs, everything else has been run out of the 300 fund. Well, COVID has changed that. You know, specifically last school year when we had, you know, very, very limited revenues coming in because we limited the capacity at our sporting events. So working with Mr. McGuire, he is working now on a budget. And it is a conversation that we're going to have, and we're going to have to have at the board level. Because if we are to fund each of our sports at a level where it may be required to provide for all of these things, traditionally speaking, the revenue will not be able to cover the expenditures. And what that means in simple terms is I need the board to commit money from general fund to cover those costs. So that would be a conversation that we would have, and I would expect that in the next couple of months as we work on a formalized budget for, for one of the first times for the district.
Well, that would be a, a big topic of discussion for our finance.
It would be. That's how we would start it.
Oh, absolutely. That's good.
Does the school pay for the referees for the hockey team?
My understanding is we pay for all officials.
Okay, because I think when it first started, the hockey, the hockey team was paying for its own. Everything was their expense when they were a club thing. They were allowed to transport themselves to away games. Now, is that the same or are they?
They still transport themselves.
Okay, okay.
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Sure.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Lozinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Purnat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on now, Dr. Goggins, to Superintendent's recommendations.
Great, thank you. I only have a few this evening as well. And 5A is resolution to approve administrative employment. Amanda Musselman, who should be in the room with you right now, is being recommended as the Associate Superintendent of Instruction to replace Kathy Maxwell. Resolution to approve employment of exempt staff member, who, someone we may have mentioned earlier, Dequan Shaw, who is coming to us from the Sandusky Perkins Schools. And actually, he started today, as you can see, and is effective start date. Letter C is a resolution to approve employment of two classified staff members, one special education assistant, Lisa Miller, who many of you know, who are involved in PTA now, and supervision assistant Kelly Sherwood. Letter D is a resolution to approve salary increases due to educational attainment. Letter E is an amendment for Jennifer Bakenny. She is our new guidance secretary at Lee Bernison Middle School. We need to amend her start date. Letter F is a resolution to approve athletic supplemental contracts for a winter and spring faculty manager, an assistant gymnastics coach, and a volunteer hockey coach. In letter G, we have two trips on here, two overnight trips, one for Science Olympiad at Penn State, and another one is our girls' basketball team participating in tournaments in Orlando, Florida. Finally, we have on here is our memorandum of understanding for our partnership with our Westlake Police Department. As you may know, the, we have a very strong relationship with our police department. They have a resource officer in each of our buildings. And I know we've talked about this in the past, but the mindset of the resource officer has changed over the years where the people who Chief Belozer has selected to work with us, I don't want to use the term, but they have a select set of skills. They have a very special set of skills outside of just like patrolmen. They are very good planners. They have foresight. They, they really help us with keeping our, our buildings safe physically with what we do to make sure that we harden our facilities to make sure that they're safe, but also internally with threat assessments and things like that. So they're very valuable partners, and we're very grateful for our relationship with our city and our police department. And this memorandum of understanding is an extension of the current memorandum of understanding that we have in place with very few changes. Those are my items. If it's okay with the board, I don't see anything on there that should be voted alone, but if there is something you want to pull out, that, that's fine with me. But I would be fine with A through H.
For the board, are you comfortable with combining the Superintendent's recommendations?
I'd like to have Amanda Musselman separate.
Will do. Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation 5A?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Congratulations, man. Obviously, you've been here, is it six years? So you've obviously made a great impact in our, our school districts. Congratulations.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Purnat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation 5B, C, D, E, F, G, and H?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
As always, I, I'll echo what Dr. Goggins says about our relationship with the city and the ability to have resource officers in all of our schools and having that very close relationship with the city definitely pays off in a variety of different ways. I just said safety wise, so.
I know I have always received positive comments when it's come to the relationship with the city as well as especially our relationship with our SROs. I, I, I have never heard anything negative about our SROs, has anyone? So I, I enjoy the fact that this relationship continues. And I'm glad that it's in place.
As Mrs. Lozinski and I walk through Dover Intermediate School, there's part of their Win Wednesdays. The SROs are playing, they're running a chess club with some of the students, so shows the way they're involved with students.
Further comments? Roll call?
Purnat?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. The public can address the board on any issue. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? If you would state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name's Don Snyder, and I'm Westlake resident too. I have four of my five kids in the Westlake schools. Yeah, I don't know how many of you know the name Theophilus Painter. He is a zoologist who lived from the 1880s until the late 1960s. And he's best known for his discovery that as humans, our genetics are contained in 48 chromosomes. Well, science is reproducible, so this was kind of groundbreaking. So lots of scientists followed up on his work, and they account 46 chromosomes. But the authority, the experts said there were 48, so they changed their answers. This went on for 30 or 40 years to the point that school textbooks would post images of 46 chromosomes, and they would label them as 48 chromosomes. And this went on until about 1955, when another scientist came along and checked with a different method, a different kind of microscope, and found that there were 46 chromosomes. And it went back, and all of these researchers who had followed up, you know, it's part of scientific processes. You follow up, you verify, you, you know, recheck and make sure it's reproducible. All these people who came after him all changed their answer because the authority said there were 46, or there was 48 chromosomes. Now, there's a lot of entangled interests in our federal government and the people making big decisions. I don't know if you've seen like the, the financial interest between how many people from the three-letter health agencies have worked at Pfizer and the high-level executives back and forth. And we see this all over the place once you start looking. Well, one of the beauties is we have local elected officials that are supposed to insulate from this. You make separate decisions. The problem is, I think one of the reasons people are so mad at school boards across the country is over and over again, you say, well, there might be 46 chromosomes. One of you did at the August meeting. You said you counted 46 chromosomes and said, well, everybody else counted 48, so I'm going to change my answer. And we see this going on over and over again. You're just rubber stamping whatever the high-rope people were supposed to be protected from are stating. So my request is do your actual research. Whatever you decide, don't blame St. Fauci, Dr. Vanderhoff, whoever. I want to see you back it up with some sort of actual, you know, studies. Look, see what it actually says, because COVID is spread by aerosols. Masks don't stop aerosols. My second request is that you talk to an actual expert. I know you get lots of emails from parents who are gynecologists and audiologists and other kinds of ologists. Those aren't experts in masks. Talk to an industrial hygienist. They'll tell you how much you are spreading germs with these masks and how the aerosols that are the most potent with the highest viral load are the smallest, and those get deep into your lungs. And these do not stop it, but you're causing all kinds of other problems. My third is request is to own your actions. We know how emotionally damaging these masks are to kids, and we know that there's an explosion of mental health issues. You got brought in, you all brought in extra mental health experts at the schools. We know this. You did that. You own that. You can fix this by recognizing that these don't stop aerosols. You're not solving the problem. So one of my really good friends is a kindergarten teacher. She's at a different school.
Could you please announce your name again?
Sure, Elaine Evenhouse. So, and at her, at her elementary school, the week that vaccines were approved for the five-year-olds and up, within one week, 30 of her students in the school, in the kindergarten class, got COVID. Her next-door neighbor, all four of her kids got the vaccine. All four of them got COVID within one week of getting the vaccine. These are experiments, and they have absolutely no room for our children to be getting. If you look at the VAERS data, data reports, you can look that up on your own, there is more evidence of 10 years of every single vaccine possible, all added up, all of them. Every vaccine over the past 10 years was like 16, 1.6, it was like 16, 1.6 million. It's probably 1.8, I think now. Anyway, that was up until October. Well, since, since in 10 months, the COVID vaccine has had, has, out of 1.6 million of those adverse side effects, COVID had eight, over 800,000. It's 837,000. That was, that was in October. It's a lot more now. But if you look at the, you can look up the data for that information, and kids are actually getting COVID. It is, it is 100% proof that the vaccines are causing kids to get COVID and everybody else to get COVID because it's not actually working. Can we please admit that the vaccines aren't working? Can we please admit that the masks aren't working? Can we please admit that this is all a bunch of lies and that we are being tricked by people that don't actually have our health and our best interests at heart? We are being lied to, and I expect every single one of you to do your jobs. I mean, protect our children. You know, you want to do it for yourselves? I don't give a crap. Go mask yourselves. Go get your boosters. I don't care what you do to yourselves. That's your own responsibility. Our responsibility is our own children, our own bodies. So respect that. It's our constitutional right by God given to us. We don't have to wear masks if we don't believe in them. Our body, our choice, right? You push so hard for that. Why isn't anybody respecting that? Just do your homework on the, on the people getting back, getting COVID after their vaccines within one week.
Thank you. Further comments? At this time, we'll move to nomination and election of officers, the president pro tem.
As you're aware, we have our, we'll be scheduling an organizational meeting in January here. By law, we're required to have it by January 15th. Our current structure of our executive presidential position only runs through the end of the calendar year. So we asked for the board to appoint a president pro tem to start and oversee the organizational meeting up until the board elects a new president and vice president. So at this time, I'd like to call for nominations for president pro tem.
Our meeting will be January 10th, then?
Well, well, that'll be the next thing that we're going to worry about.
Is there a nomination for president pro tem?
I nominate Bob Stoll. If he'll be here. Do we know if he'll be here?
I believe he, he said he would be for the, if we go with the 10th.
Okay.
For the president pro tem?
Pro tem, yes.
Okay. Is there any other nominations?
In the, in the, in the event that Mr. Stoll can't make it, what happens? At that meeting, do we then?
You would. At that meeting, if you have no, we would start the meeting by
By doing the same thing?
Yes, as a treasurer, I would call the meeting to order, and then we would, a first order of business would be to elect a president.
Fair enough. Thanks.
There's no other nominations. I will ask for a vote on our first nomination of president pro tem as Bob Stoll.
So move.
Second.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Purnat?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Bob Stoll will serve as our president pro tem. Thank you. And then the second one we have for the board here is to vote on a organizational meeting for January. I currently have it scheduled in there, just as I put it in there for January 10th, 2022. The reason for that is that stays within our guidelines on the second and fourth Monday. It does fall within that window, like I previously said, of January 15th of having our organizational meeting. So if you'd like to leave that the way it is, great. But please know that that's not written in stone. If the board would like to change it here, this is your opportunity to do so. Would there be a motion to approve a organizational meeting?
For January the 10th?
For January 10th, yep.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
In the past, I know it's been held at five, and then the regular meetings at six, or six and seven, but there was
Yeah, so we, one of the pieces is we do have a tax budget meeting that we're required to hold as well. We typically do that immediately after the organizational meeting. So our organizational meeting historically takes 45 minutes to an hour. So we would post it as immediately following. So I would right now look to stick with like a six and seven. We can change it to five. I'm here, you're We can change it to five. I'm here either way, so, uh, five is not an issue for me.
Change your time?
Or keep it the same as it's always been.
We will, yep.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, alright. Any other discussion? To approve the organizational meeting for January tenth at six PM. Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Purnat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
At this time, uh, we'll cover board comments. Any comments from anyone on the boards?
Um, I just was made aware of, um, a teacher at Dover that is kind of doing a, uh, Dover, I'm sorry. The elementary school, Westlake Elementary School, third grade teacher Caitlin Jules doing a thing for, uh, spreading kindness in, uh, December. And she has a whole calendar of events sent at home to parents. But I have just heard that some of the kids have chosen, one of the things they've chosen to spread their kindness is they come, they make little, um, note cards and at the end of the day, as the kids are going out to the bus or whatever, they hand in these, these little notes that say you are wonderful or you have a, have a great day, whatever. And it's, it's in the third grade. So I don't think the rest of the school is, uh, you know, uh, uh, getting the benefits of it, but I know that the third graders are enjoying it and it's very uplifting. And the teachers are even getting the notes and they've got them pasted on their computer screens. And, uh, so I just wanted to give a shout out to, uh, the third graders of, uh, Mrs. Jules' class for spreading their kindness in December.
Excellent. Further board comments?
We had a great tour for the curriculum committee of Lee Bernison and of uh, Dover Intermediate School. And it was great seeing all the wonderful things that are going on over in those buildings and seeing the new career connections program that Mr. Primrose has started over there and seeing they were building, um, basically little, um, coolers to test how quickly ice would melt and what would last the longest. And they were putting them together and then they would test it in the next week. But, um, we're going to see that and see go through the buildings and that was a good time.
Field trips are always good.
I'm excited to see the youth group survey results coming out, but hearing that things are going over pretty good, so.
I know the board is, uh, supportive of all of our students. Uh, I know part of that is, uh, the board has always supported circle of friends, now part of best buddies. I think we've all received, uh, information regarding, uh, not just the best buddies champion of the year, but our students' participation in that. So I just wanted to recognize that, um, that program continues to, uh, reach out to our students and, uh, appreciative of everyone on the board supporting that. Further comments? At this time, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Some, second.
Discussion, uh, the board plans to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official. Further discussion? Roll call.
To enter into executive session at six fifty-three PM. Purnat?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The board will not take action in executive session or the board comes out of the executive session. Thank you.